Going to want to welcome everyone to this special committee hearing. I am joined by Mr. Weezer and Mr. Harris Dawson. So we do have a quorum. I want to ask the clerk to read the items, and we'll proceed.
Good morning, sir. Item number one is Communication from the City Attorney, Resolution of Necessity, Ballot Resolutions and Election Ordinances Relative to Submitting to the Voters a Proposed General Obligation Bond Proposition and a Proposed Parcel Tax Proposition Related to Homelessness and Housing and Calling Special Elections on the Propositions and Consolidating Them with the State General Election to be Held on November 8, 2016. Item number two is Motion Bonin, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Rue Relative to a Request to the City Attorney to Prepare the Necessary Election Ordinance and Resolutions to Place a Ballot Measure for the November 8, 2016 General Election to Authorize General Obligation Bond for Homelessness and Housing and to Adjust Amount of the Proposed Bond to 1.5 Million and Require that the Proceeds from the Bonds be Dedicated to our Constructing a Minimum of 10,000 Units of Permanent Supportive Housing.
Okay, so I'd like to get the CAO/CLA to come forward, sit at the front table. Now, I'd like to welcome everyone that's here this morning, and again, thank my colleagues, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Harris Dawson, for all of the hard work, not only that they've done with this, the Rules Committee, but the hard work that they've done on the Homelessness and Poverty Committee. What I'd like to do where it relates to those of you that are in the audience, we're going to make some adjustments, some amendments, and I'm very optimistic that you will listen carefully to some of these amendments, because I'm of the belief that a lot of these will satisfy some of your concerns. So I am not suggesting that you don't come up here and speak, because I want to hear from you, but what I am asking is that you pay close attention to the tenor and the tone and the amendments as we move forward. So with that said, why don't we... Do you have a copy of amendments that were recommended by this committee?
Yes, we do.
Okay, let me just say this, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Weezer. Before we actually get into the amendments, I'm going to ask Mr. Weezer and Mr. Harris Dawson to chime in. This has been... I think that this council has made it crystal clear as to how important this issue is to us. I'm very proud of where we are in comparison to where we were. Now, we might be late to the party, but we are at the party, and we're going to take over the music, okay? So we are determined to have a positive effect, and we are determined to lead the way. Given the conversations that we've heard, that we've had in council, we believe that... I believe that these amendments will address a lot of the concerns, and also, given the conversations that we've had in council, I think that there exists the ability to find consensus. So when we read the amendments, there will be one that adjusts the number upwards by at least an additional 100 million. Also, we hope to earmark a significant percentage to permanent supportive housing, with a smaller percentage to affordable, because we recognize their legal requirements that make us do that. Plus, one goes with the other. And so with that said, Mr. Harris Dawson, would you like to chime in, or Mr. Weezer? And then we'll have the CAO and CLA kind of walk us through the committee recommendations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I would echo your comments about, you know, it's... This, from the outset, the city council, I think, has taken homelessness very seriously, but in doing that, we've recognized the role that the Los Angeles County plays. And so we worked together to come up with a strategic plan together that we're not in competition with each other, but we're in cooperation with each other, and had a, I think, sensible division of labor in it. I think all of us in the county, in the city, certainly on the Homelessness Committee, and I think members around the horseshoe in general, we made the assessment, and I think this was an assessment sort of broadly shared, that the best solution to fund our plans was a regional solution. So County of Los Angeles coming up with something that would fund not just the county, but the City of Los Angeles, and include all the other cities in the county, so that everybody had some skin in the game, and services and housing and all that were operating in a coordinated way. And I think we took some time, certainly on the Homelessness Committee, we did this, in the council, we did this. We took some time, and we kind of let that process play out. And so what that meant was, we became very, very short on time. So we had to put together something relatively quickly. Members of the Homelessness and Poverty Committee, myself, Councilman Weezer, Price, Sedia, and Bonin, worked feverishly to put something together and bring it to rules. It went through another vetting here. We heard from the community, in both committees, in this committee last time, and the Homeless Committee over the past few months. And so today, I think, we have come up with some amendments that address a lot of the concerns that many of us had going in. I'm happy to see Councilmember Bonin joining us today, front row, center, checking out what we're doing this morning. But again, I think we've gone through a good process, and we're at the very... We've got less to go than the ground that we've covered before now. And so I think we'll deal with making a strong and robust commitment to permanent supportive housing. Again, you know, I maintain, we're really the only group that's going to do that. The City of Los Angeles is the only entity that's going to invest in permanent supportive housing, while taking into account many of the concerns that we all share about affordable housing, about entering the housing market more generally. All that stuff is important. And I'll just conclude, you know, this, Mr. President, this is sort of why you want to come to the City Council to have discussions and debates over good stuff, right? So are we doing permanent supportive housing? Are we doing affordable housing? Are we helping people get into the housing market? And so I like the direction that I think we're headed with the amendments today, and look forward to not only a continuing discussion, but all of us getting out there and making sure the voters in Los Angeles understand this and can catch on and participate in the vision.
I thought we came here to get all of the free, cheap coffee we could get, I tell you.
I don't have coffee.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, and this is... We've come a long way from the first establishment of the city's ad hoc committee in homelessness. And, Mr. President, you had the foresight to say, "Let's move that to a permanent housing committee, a homelessness committee." And from that, we not only announced a permanent homelessness committee, but also announced the need to address more significantly the homeless issue in our city. And from that, we committed to attributing an additional $100 million in our budget, which we did. We also committed at that time to come up with a comprehensive strategic plan on homelessness, which we did and passed in January. And the big question remained at that time, whether we would find the funding necessary to address the recommendations made in that report. So we got busy again in the committee and working with our colleagues in the council, and found a revenue stream that would help support a majority of this plan. Now, given the different intergovernmental relationships, the responsibilities of the county, the responsibilities of the city, and given what we think is the sentiment of the public at this time, I think we've come forward with the best solution for this time. It's not ideal, but at least, given the various moving variables in addressing homelessness, I do believe this is the best we can come up with at this time. And although it's not an immediate solution, the fact of the matter is that, should we move forward with a bond, the availability of those funds and how we move forward with them, or even the parcel tax and how we move forward with that, it'll take some time before we actually realize those dollars, and that's something we have to be very aware of. But nonetheless, to move forward with a bond that is over $1 billion, or a parcel tax that's over $1 billion, is a very significant investment in addressing homelessness, that I think the results of that, what would come out of that, is a real testament to the city, should we move forward in that direction. I just saw the proposed amendments. I agree with them. I think we've... Several of us have been advocates for putting the majority of our funding into permanent supportive housing, which is a model that works. The question I have is, as we move forward, we can and should continue to come up with a plan on working with the county and service providers on how they can provide those services at the facilities the city will provide. But I'm very happy with the place we are now, and the work is going to continue after this, should the council, this committee and the council's support, to move forward. The real work begins with assuring that this passes in November, but the polling has indicated, all the polling we've seen, is that this is the number-one issue on Angelino's minds right now, and this is the number-one issue that the public wants their local government to address, who are moving forward with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And what I want to say, too, is I think this is a combination of everybody's work. This is listening to the voices from the various organizations that spend all of their time trying to make life easier for those that are on the street. This is based on a conversation that we had in council last week. This is taking into consideration, Mr. Bonin, some of your concerns and other concerns from other members that were raised, and so hopefully, this puts us at least in a position where we can really begin, I believe, to build a consensus. With that said, why don't we... Karen, is it you? Who's going to walk us through the recommendations? And again, for those of you that are with us today, I want you to pay close attention to these suggestions. Please, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What I can do is I can either read them all, or do a summary first that kind of gives the overall aspect of it, and if you wanted to get into details about any other individual recommendations, we can do that. That's your...
Why don't we let you decide which way you want to go, and then we'll just kind of take it from there?
Okay. I'll start just with... There are two measures that are being considered. One is the general obligation bond measure, and one is a parcel tax. With regard to the general obligation bond measure, the various documents, that would include the resolution of necessity, the resolutions and ordinance, would modify the bond amount to $1.2 billion. Previously, it was $1.1. It would also delete reference to the First Time Homebuyers program. It would clarify that no more than 20% of funds would go to low-income housing. It would also allow for the city attorney with assistance from the CAO and CLA to clarify the maintenance-of-effort language that's currently in the draft ordinances. It would also, in terms of timing, have the draft resolutions go to the council on June Then it also would amend the ballot title in question, and to read as follows, "Homelessness Reduction and Prevention Housing and Facilities Bond Proposition," and the numbering would be determined later, "to provide safe, clean, affordable housing for the homeless and for those in danger of becoming homeless, such as battered women and their children, veterans, seniors, foster youth, and the disabled, and provide facilities to increase access to mental health care, drug and alcohol treatment, and other services, shall the City of Los Angeles issue $1.2 billion in general obligation bonds with citizen oversight and annual financial audits." Then, let's see. I think that those are the general summaries for the bond measure.
Let's continue.
For the ballot... Excuse me. For the parcel tax, it would also request drafting of the ordinance and resolution for consideration on Tuesday, June 28, and would modify the language with regard to the tax rate to apply a 0.0381 per-square-footage tax on improvements, which would generate approximately $90 million annually. It would amend the language to replace the words "homeless housing" with "supportive housing," and also further define what supportive housing means. It would add new definitions for...
Give us a little example of that, where it relates to the definition.
Okay. Would you like to?
Sure. In terms of the definition, supportive housing is a combination of housing and services to really help people lead productive lives. So that could include mental health, it could include job training. It really depends on the population that the facility is trying to serve.
It would also add new definitions for extremely low-income and very low-income housing. Currently, the bond measure includes definitions for those, and that has to do with the HUD-defined definitions of what those are, 0% to 30%.
0% to 30%, extremely low income; 31% to 50%, very low income.
This would also allow the city attorney with CAO and CLA to draft the appropriate maintenance-of-effort language. The maintenance-of-effort language would essentially ensure that funding that's currently recognized as one-time, and for general fund and special funds, ensure that those are recognized as one-time, not ongoing expenses. And then with regard to grant funds and other special funds, that those would be continued as long as those funding sources are available. Then, the ballot title in question would also be replaced with the following language. The title would be "Homelessness Reduction and Prevention and Housing Parcel Tax," and it would be "to provide housing for the homeless and for those in danger of becoming homeless, such as battered women and their children, veterans, seniors, and the disabled. Increase access to supportive services for the homeless, shall the City of Los Angeles collect a parcel tax of $0.0381 per-square-footage of improvements totaling approximately $90 million annually with citizen oversight, annual audits, and a July 1, 2027 sunset clause." And, let's see. These would also apply to all the documents that are included. And then the further recommendations would be to instruct the CAO/CLA and Housing Department with city attorney to report on proposed housing programs, including the financing programs implemented based on the city bond council determination, including most effective use while reducing city's liability, outlining how the funds will be prioritized for supportive housing units while maximizing other available public resources, providing a plan that outlines the sources and best use for all funding available for affordable housing, based on the general obligation bond proceeds being prioritized for supportive housing units. And then upon adoption of the general bond measure, excuse me, by the voters, instruct CAO/CLA and Housing to report to council with a draft policy prioritizing all other sources of funding for affordable housing, for non-supportive housing units, including allowing any new flexible sources to provide for rental and homeownership for households earning above 80% of AMI. And it further goes on to draft the... Have the city attorney with assistance of CAO/CLA and the chair to make any... To draft and make any technical or legal corrections. And one additional correction is that the resolution of necessity for the bond measure needs to go one day prior to the resolutions and ordinances for that. So I think the intent is to have those on Tuesday.
Okay. Let's... Let me stop you there.
Okay.
And that's... I want to make sure that we are crystal clear where it relates to all of the timelines. So we don't want anything to fall through the cracks on this. And then, Mr. Bonin, if you want to say something, I'm going to let you, but I want to just... Couple of questions, things I want to verify. So I want to make sure we are crystal clear on the timeline, so that we do not make a mistake. So...
Okay. With regard to bond measures, the resolution of necessity must be adopted prior to the resolutions and the ordinances that would create the measure. So in terms of timing, I think the intent is to have the resolution of necessity on the Tuesday council agenda with the subsequent documents, resolutions, and ordinances available for the council's consideration on Wednesday, the 29th.
So let me stop you, and then I... Mr. Weezer, I see you grabbing for the mic, so I want to get you... So we have to have a vote tomorrow, then a vote on Wednesday. And if we do that, and those votes are successful, where it relates to the bond, we have to do... There's nothing else for us to do by the end of this week.
That's correct. And just to note, the last day, I think your... The intent is to have them tomorrow and Wednesday. The last day to adopt each is the 29th, which is Wednesday, and Friday. Friday is the last day for the council to take any action on this.
Well, that's our cushion day.
Yes.
So I don't... Friday, I want this to be done. So again, Tuesday and Wednesday, where it relates to the bond, then we're finished. The parcel tax?
Parcel tax, I believe, the last day is Friday again, but I believe that's intended to be on the council agenda for tomorrow, Tuesday.
Okay. Now, I'm going to come back. I have a couple of questions with Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. And those are... I'm not sure how to label these, but apparently, that's the first read, and then we come back after the recess for a final vote? Is that correct?
If it doesn't pass on the first reading, then the second reading would be after the break, and as I understand it, the election code provides that, as long as the measures are approved on the first reading, that is enough to satisfy those deadlines.
Okay. And, Mr. Chair, I thought at the council... The last council meeting, you proposed the idea that we would put the language out for the two, for the parcel tax and the bond, and then the final day to withdraw one of them is when?
It's August 12.
August 12.
It's August 12. It's not the 15th?
No.
Okay, good. Glad it was the 15th. That's why we're going to check.
So the president's idea was to propose support both, should they pass in council, and then come back August 12, and before then, withdraw one, so that we only put one on the ballot, in the meantime, it gives the public an opportunity to provide input on both. Now, my question is, whatever we support this week on the parcel tax and/or the bond, and the bond, can we amend any of that when it comes back? No, in the final, right? Because we could only withdraw it. So that would be in council would be the...
Right. All amendments have to be done this week.
Okay. When is the last time we could amend this? So whatever comes out of today, and then council, when's the last time we could amend whatever goes on the final?
July 1st is the last day to act.
To adopt.
That's Friday.
Friday, this Friday.
So we can make adjustments up until this Friday, right?
Yes.
But not if they pass in council tomorrow?
No, we just...
Oh, we could bring it back, though. We could bring it back, yeah, but that's a whole maneuvering and agenda.
Those are some of your council rules affect that.
Just want to be clear with that. Okay.
We do need to be careful with the resolution of necessity, because remember, if we... When the council adopts that, there's at least a day lag between when you adopt that and when you adopt the final ordinances and actions related to the geo-bond. So you want to be careful on the geo-bond that you don't... Right. You've got that little cushion, you don't want to go past that cushion.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I have some other questions, but not as they relate to the timeline, so...
Well, I think what I think we're going to do, I just want to make sure we're square on this. I have two more. I was going to let Mr. Bonin address the committee, see if you want to, or if you want to say something before Mr. Bonin, but I have two other things. In our... The conversations that I've had, and I believe individually, separate conversations, that Mr. Harris Dawson and maybe Mr. Weezer as well, that there are some federal, I guess, guidelines or restrictions that we have to adhere to, where it relates to a split in how we designate, you know, what goes where, or there has to be a split, or maybe I'm not properly asking the question, Yolanda?
Sure. So maybe you're referring to the fact that because of the Olmstead decision, which was a Supreme Court decision, that going forward jurisdictions are not financing 100% projects that are permanent supportive housing. So there's usually a mix in the populations.
So if this... If we were to proceed, would this mix keep us within the letter of that act?
I think it would, based on your... The other funding resources that we have currently in the city. I know that based on the amendment, you would only allow 20% of the bond or parcel tax proceeds to be used for that population, between 51% and 80% of AMI. So it could work on a little... To be honest, I'm a little... I think the percentage may be a little too low, because we haven't really had time to analyze how the numbers would work. But I think if you focus your... The other cities' funding sources that are mainly federal, home and CDPG that goes within the trust fund now, and focus those...
So we're working on...
Yes.
So what you're telling me, if we work on trying to kind of designate some of those other funds that we would spend on affordable, if we kind of memorialize that, and that helps us?
Exactly.
Okay, so we...
It'll make you blend the part, you know, the project, so you have supportive housing units as well as other affordable that are probably meeting, you know, homeless folks that don't need the type of intensive services that supportive means.
So I would hope that we would have something on that before the week is over as well.
We'll work on that.
And the last thing that I wanted to ask, I got a lot of phone calls and texts and things of that nature, where it relates... Because of an interest in the First Time Homebuyer Program. Now, are there limitations or restrictions where it relates to something like that and a housing bond?
Yes. So the geo-bond, as you all know, is very restrictive, and our bond council at this time has told us he does not even feel comfortable in terms of that type of program. So at this point, it would not be available for homeownership. The parcel tax, as you know, is very flexible, so you could use that for homeownership, for any type of housing, as well as for services and operations, which we cannot use the geo-bond proceeds for.
Okay. Mr. Bonin, did you want to?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Colleagues, thank you for giving me a few minutes this morning. I appreciate it, and thank you for hearing this item. I want to start with a couple thank yous, if I might, a little more extensive than what I just said. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Weezer for launching this proposal, for sticking their necks out, for crafting this idea, and for their incredible leadership on this. This council is lucky to have them leading on this issue, and I'm just very grateful to be able to serve on the committee with them and their leadership on this. And, Mr. Weston, I wanted to thank you and your staff for the work that you have been doing on these proposals over the past couple weeks, to make sure that we put together something that is sound, that is smart, that is responsible from a policy perspective, and that stands a good chance of passage with the voters in November. Thank you very much on that. As you know, I put in a motion the other day to try to make some changes to the proposal, and I want to thank you for considering them, and I want to thank you for listening to them. I had a number of different interests in doing so. I had a number of, of, of different interests in, in doing so. One of those is, I wanted to see the amount of money we were seeking from the voters to be higher, I'd wanted to go up to, to 1.5. I appreciate the one to 1.2, and any day when we can add $100 million to, to help people, I think that's a good day. So I'm very happy to, to see that in here. I was very concerned, secondly, with the provision for the first-time homebuyers, because I thought that significantly watered down the effort, and I thought that would have created some mistrust with the voters, and I'm glad, very grateful to see that removed, and I appreciate the, the feedback from CAO on, on why that's actually necessary as well. Third, and, and I think most important to all of that, is my, my biggest concern for, with the initial proposal was with some of the wording, that it made homeless housing or supportive housing eligible for the funds, as opposed to a required use of the funds. And as I think I said on Wednesday, given the, the complexity of doing things for homelessness, that would have effectively resulted in, in very little or, or no homeless housing, and I think the voters would have been left disappointed. And as I understand, the, the recrafting of this ordinance with the amendments that, that you and your staff have done, it's, it's 80% for homeless housing, 20% for affordable, and I think that, that's perfect. I think that, that, that does the job, I think that makes this really about homelessness, and makes this something that we can sell to the voters honestly, and show that it not only is what it, it says in its ballot description, but is consistent with the work that this council has done to create a comprehensive homelessness strategy, and to, to try to build that out. Obviously, the ideal plan would have been, as Mr. Harris-Dawson said, a countywide plan, but as, as you've often said, Mr. Weston, this is a council that's gonna lead when it has to lead. So I'm very grateful with what we have, I'm pleased with what is before us. Wanted to make one, one very small.
Please.
Technical point. Under election ordinance ballot title resolution, it says, delete all references to, to 1.1 and replace with 1.2. I just want to note that, in that same language, in the, in the paragraph of what would go on the ballot, it still says amend to 1.1. So section three of, of the election ordinance still needs to be adjusted to, to say that, it's just a small technical error. Thank you very much to all.
See, when you go to Harvard, you pick up on those small technical. So you got, your parents got their money's worth. So we, anyway, we appreciate that, and then on a serious note, Michael, I would hope that you, you know, what you said meant a lot to me personally, to the members on this committee, and we're trying to make adjustments to, to, to make this thing work. Okay, let's spend just a moment, and then I'll get with Mr. Weezer. Talk to me a little bit about the, the differences where it relates to the parcel tax, its flexibility, we, 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 we're looking at making an adjustment to the amount there as well, and to make it more on a square footage type. So if you could just kind of walk us through that, and then Mr. Weezer, the floor is yours.
Sure, so on the parcel tax, I think what you're amending is, instead of charging for, uh, uh, one set tax per parcel, regardless of size, you're gonna be charging by the tax in terms of the amendment by square foot. So it would be .03841, I believe, per square foot. The, the, I guess, the, the really advantage of the parcel tax and the proceeds, unlike the geo-bond, is extremely flexible, so you could use it for the capital for housing, very much run the same type of program the Housing Department currently runs, which provides loans to developers to be able to do that, the gap financing. It allows you to provide funding for services, for operations, so if you wanted to lease shelters or storage facilities, you could use those parcels for that purpose, and of course also for administration and staffing. The geo-bond, as we were discussing earlier, is extremely restrictive in that you could only use it for bricks and mortar, so only for the property or for the land. So it's either to acquire or improve property. Depending on where we end up in terms of our bond council's opinion, there's several options on the types of programs that you could run with the geo-bond. One is actually buying the units from the developer directly for the supportive housing units. The other is buying, and of course, in this situation, in terms of buying the units, it's a little bit, the city's liability increases because the city becomes the landlord as well, is the property owner. You could buy the land, and in that, in that type of program, liability decreases, but unfortunately, by buying the land, you're not providing the gap financing, so even if we're able to provide the land, the developer will probably still need some additional funding for that gap. And then, of course, third, if we're able to get there, based on our bond council's opinion, we could run a program just like we do now through loans, but we're not there yet. If we may, if that were, if we wanted to run that type of program after it's approved by the voters, we may have to take the bond issuance through a validation process in court, so that's sort of a risk that we take with the geo-bond, but that's where we are at this point on, on the geo-bond.
And if I could make.
Where we are now, though, it's, if, if we stay, where it relates to the geo, geo-bond as is, do we still have to go through the validation process?
Only if we, um, you know, our bond council may get to a point where they feel comfortable that we're able to run a program just like the Housing Department does now. They're not there yet, so I'm not saying that's not a possibility, that's what the city attorney has told me, that there's, that's still, there's still a possibility they'll get there without having to go through a validation. But if they don't, that's, that's, that's what we'd have to do to run the type of program the Housing Department runs now, and actually, the ideal program, right?
We should look at some language that, in the parcel, also kind of splits at 80/20 as well, and I don't know how that language would read. Okay, Mr. Weezer?
Thank you. Thank you very much. If I could go in the weeds a little bit here, because although our intent is to do an 80%, 20% split, and Mr., the chair asked this as well, that 80%, how are we defining that? Because we are defining the 20%, the 20% in the amendment says, anywhere between 51 to 80% AMI. That's what the, for 20%, 50 to 80 AMI. So how do we define the 80% so that we are sure that that, in fact, is going to permanent supportive housing? How, how are we defining it in the documents?
So, um, the way, I mean, it's actually not directly defined right now, but the way it reads, because you're only allowing 20% to be used for incomes between 51 and 80, is that the rest would be used for incomes at 50 and below, so zero, zero to 50%. So extremely low and very low income households.
Okay, and I've been, it's been explained to me that permanent supportive housing sometimes doesn't even, shouldn't be even, the criteria isn't AMI, it's a separate category from us even talking about AMI for permanent supportive housing. Is that accurate, or is that not accurate?
Do you, um, do you mean, because most chronically homeless folks are probably at very close to zero income?
Yes, uh-huh. So the question I have, and anybody here who wants to testify in public comment and apologize for the short one minute we give you, or two minutes, whatever we give you, is that, that, that's what I'm trying to understand, is that right now, 80% will be anywhere between 70 to 50% AMI, and would that assure us that we're building the necessary permanent supportive housing? Because as Mr. Harris-Dawson and Mr. Bonin and others have stated, if we leave that open, the competition to build the permanent supportive housing versus the other affordable housing, which we need, but this is a homeless, target homeless, are we gonna get to the, to permanent supportive housing with a broad range like that?
Well, you said, um, it's, you mean from zero to 50%?
Zero to 50%. 80% will qualify for zero to 50%.
Right, yeah. Well, in my opinion, I think you will get to that, those supportive housing units. I mean, I think you have folks here who are developers of supportive housing, and I think they can comment, but I think you would definitely get to supportive units.
Because if we agree that permanent supportive housing can be identified as 0 to 30%, well maybe we say 80% should be 0 to 30%, correct? As opposed to 0 to 50, to 50%.
But I think you also have, um, you know, homeless, other homeless individuals and families that may work and are below 50% or right at 40 or 30, but they just can't afford the rent. So you're able to capture that entire population. But again, I think you have a lot of developers here who develop supportive housing units, and they can comment.
And this is a question we have to answer for ourselves by tomorrow when we finalize this, so I just, I, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, homeless, homeless individuals or households actually do have some types of, um, income. So SSI, for example, there are some, there, there are some types of federal support that they receive. There was a motion that recently came through council where a housing project that was restricted to households that earn no more than 15% income, they couldn't put home, homeless people into those units because their SSI support was higher than 15%. So, um, you know, if federal grant programs, for example, or support programs happen to provide a little bit more funding, and now these, these households could not earn the, you know, they have a little bit more than 30%, you really would have restricted people in a way that you didn't intend.
And, and this has been a very good conversation throughout this, to try to determine how do we get to homelessness, whether it's gonna be affordable, affordable, but as we keep narrowing it down, and I keep, and now I'm hearing that the intent is to have 80% homeless, we, now we have to figure out if in fact, do we keep it to 0 to 30, or 0 to 50? And, um, you know, may, and I'm not sure how that works. I mean, it's the providers, the people out there who do the work each day that could better inform us what's the direction to go, but my quick read would be that 80% should be to the 0 to 30% AMI, and then the 20% should be 30 to 80. I mean, that's my quick read, but I'm not sure if by doing that, it is not addressing the issue of making sure this goes to permanent supportive housing. So anyway, that's, we'll, we'll leave that, but that's just a question, hopefully any of the providers could help inform us. Secondly is, on the bond, it's been mentioned that we do need to go through this validation process. I thought, the whole idea, when, when I started talking about this, in my mind, was that we should have a homeless trust fund for the construction of permanent supportive housing, and we'll put the bond money in there, and, you know, we will have to, and we could, people could tap into that as we do for affordable housing, now with the housing, affordable housing trust fund. And then we, we were informed, we have to do the validation process in order for us to determine whether we can do that or not, that will take about a year. So in the interim, we decided, or we've discussed around this building, these chambers, that perhaps we do a dual track, while that validation is going on, and determining whether we can have that homeless trust fund, that we get creative with developers, that we lease land, because we have to own the asset, we have to own the facility. But I think we have to make that all clear by the time we decide to move forward with the bond. If we do, we have, between now and August 12th, I would ask as a report back from the Housing Department, CLA and CAO, to inform us what that will look like, what that program would look like, because if we're running into any roadblocks right now, we should be aware of them before we decide to go forward with either the bond or the parcel tax. And so that has to be very clear for us, so that we could get feedback from people who would develop and support these facilities, and they could give us feedback as to whether what we're thinking works or not. We don't want to get all this funding, then realize, hey, we can't do what we thought we were gonna get. So that has to be, as opposed to just discussions that we've had so far, put in a, a, a report to us as a report back, so we could see that very clearly, what that means.
What is the timing on a report for that?
Before August 12th, right, you said?
Well, we have to get away before then.
Right, before you. So in, in terms to be, just to clarify a few things, so we may have to validate, and hopefully we get in, if we are, as, as you said, hopefully we'll have a definite answer by August or before the 12th. But the other thing I wanted to clarify is that regardless of what program we're able to run with the geo-bond, and hopefully the ideal loan program, just like it works now, we would not, the proceeds would not be put into the trust fund, we would actually issue bonds based on the projects that are ready to fund, right? Because you're issuing debt.
I see, okay.
So you don't want to issue it before you actually need the money.
And that all has to be clear, and put in a report back as to how this program would work, so that we're very clear as to where these bond proceeds will go, and how the, the process will look like, and get feedback from the public as to whether we think, from the experts in the field, whether we think that would work or not.
And, and if I could add to your point about how much would be spent on what levels of, of AMI, if, if it's not included in, it's an option to include it in the ballot language, but if it's not, the Oversight Committee will be presenting a plan that will subsequently be approved by the City Council, and those kinds of, of distributions could be made in that plan that would, would be available for you to subsequently amend. And so the ballot language wouldn't be as restrictive, but it would allow you to, to make, to make the allocations as you deem appropriate.
And that's my only concern, is it's already restrictive, and we, I don't know if we want to make it overly restrictive, especially when you have the Oversight Committee and then you have the council at the end of the day, but those are all good points. Mr. Harris-Dawson, then I'm gonna go to the public comment.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I, I echo some of the citizens of Councilman Weezer, who talked about permanent supportive housing and the sort of, uh, the definition seems a little bit squishy, and, and I'm just wondering, um, do we have to define permanent supportive housing, housing by income? Or can it be defined by services?
I think it, it, you don't have to define it by income at all, just by services, and that may really give you more flexibility. So that's, as, as Karen just mentioned, I think you want to be careful to restrict yourself in the ballot language, especially when you consider the other funding sources. So if no place like home becomes available, right, the city would want to use those funds first before even parcel tax proceeds or geo-bond proceeds. So, so you may not want to restrict yourself in, within the ballot language, and really just focus on the type of housing, who you want to serve, and then have, as the annual plan comes forward, ensure that those uses are prioritized.
And one of the proposed changes is to include a definition of supportive housing that would include what those services would be, so that would be just built into the definition of what it is.
I see, and, and that's what we expect to have before us 48 hours from now.
Correct.
Great.
Okay, let's, uh, uh, ask folk to come up and speak, is it LaShande Mays or Maire and Adam Murray and Tommy Newman, we're speaking on items one and two. You guys stick around, you don't have to stay at the table, but please, when I call you, come forward. Okay, and then we're gonna stop taking cards from this point. If I called you, come on up, don't, you don't have to be in order. Just identify yourself.
Good morning. Good morning. Adam Murray with InterCity Law Center. I want to start by thanking the committee members and Councilman Bonin for your leadership on this very important issue, it's much appreciated. The main thing I wanted to voice today, you have largely already addressed, which is the importance that this be focused on homelessness. I think the 80% that you have focused on that is a, is a great step forward, and I want to thank you for that. I do want to raise two particular issues, one of which Councilman Weezer just flagged, and then Councilman Harris-Dawson followed up on, which is, I do think it is important that the 80% that is focused on homelessness be explicitly called out as for permanent supportive housing. I think that that makes very clear that it is homelessness housing, and that's what the voters want to see. I've heard you, Council President, many times say that you want something that passes here, and what the voters say over and over again is they want to fund homelessness housing. So I think it's important that we call that out as such. And secondly, I just want to highlight that, I think most of us here would love to see a larger bond here. I think, uh, Councilman Bonin's 1.5 billion would be what we would love to see. Thank you.
Okay, I get that.
[inaudible].
Okay, yes, sir, identify yourself.
Tommy Newman, LA Family Housing, good morning, Council President, Council members. I just wanted to speak to the flexibility of the bond. We appreciate that the CAO and CLA are, are being very diligent in analyzing the risk. I wanted to point out that San Francisco in 2013 passed Prop A, which was a $315 million bond measure, which was used for a wide range of purposes, in ways that seem counter to what we've heard here. So I think that that's worth investigating a little more fully. Also, at the state level, Prop 46, when you were up there, Council President, that was a $2.1 billion general obligation bond to support affordable housing, used in a traditional kind of revolving loan fund sort of way. And then Prop 1C passed after that, another $2.85 billion, also a traditional revolving loan fund use with very specific. loan fund use with very specific types of uses. And then No Place Like Home, a bond measure, again, that will be loaned out. So there are a lot of examples in the state, and I'd just look at them.
Thank you. Sharon Rapor, Rabbi Isaf Frakis, Mike Alvedrez, and Reverend Blue, please come forward. Yes, identify yourself.
Good morning. Sharon Rapor with the Corporation for Supportive Housing. First, I wanted to thank you for all the work done toward this bond, it is an exciting bond. Wanted to clarify two things. One is 30% AMI is usually the standard with both tax credits, as well as the No Place Like Home and other state funding sources are most likely gonna be limited to 30% AMI. We would support that. Also, to clarify, the Olmsted decision was really, the concern is really about housing people that all have the same specific type of disability, not creating 100% of supportive housing projects. So I just wanted to clarify that. And I do want to, I do want to say that I work on state policy and have been active in supporting the state housing. We really do think that a focus on supportive housing will make this money more competitive, will make us more competitive for the state funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please come forward, identify yourself.
Good morning. Rabbi Noah Farkas, Valley Best Shalom, largest Jewish congregation in the San Fernando Valley. I also serve on the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority as Supervisor Cules Commissioner. I want to thank this committee, I want to thank the city for putting forward the bond. I want to thank Councilmember Bonham also for all of his work on the issue. I can say that I also represent LA Voice, a faith-based coalition across the city, and we very much would like to voice our support for the bond and for the continued focus on homelessness and housing. Also, as a rabbi of a wealthy community, to speak to the parcel tax for just a minute, our community is willing to be taxed because we believe in the issue. And that as a, as a wealthy community, we're willing to put our dollars behind the city because we want to help the least of us, and not just the most of us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, sir.
Good morning. Mike Alvedrez, Skid Row Housing Trust. I came up to speak in support of the prior $1.5 million bond, and, but first wanted to commend you, Mr. Chairman, as well as both members of the committee, Councilman Harris-Dawson and Weezer for their work on the homeless committee, as well as Councilman Bonham for helping us to get to this point today where we are trying to address the issue of chronic homelessness in Los Angeles. I have to say, I'm a little bit troubled that we don't have those information, the information that was described to you all in front of us. The folks who have built most of the supportive housing in this city and will continue to build it in the future are a little in the dark about the details of how these amendments might work. I hope those materials can get out to the public as quickly as possible on the city's website, so we may have a chance to evaluate them in more detail, given the fact that we are on a very short timeline, we have to act this week. I assume the first meeting is tomorrow, it'd be great to have that material before the meeting tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, now, they are, I'm informed, available in the back of the room. We should also do websites, put it on websites, do to our city folk whatever we can do to make sure people understand what it is, and any questions that they may have, let's try to come up with a appropriate way so that we can respond. In order for this to pass, we all have to be together on this, and we want you to understand where we're going from, coming from. So after Reverend Blue, if I could get Don, you still here, Don Garza? I think it's Amy Anderson, please come forward, sir. Yes.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. President, Councilman Dawson and Weezer. First, I'd like to thank you for your visionary leadership, and also your leadership to take the lead as a city of Los Angeles on this matter. And I want us to please focus in on the homelessness, that we are seriously looking to make a difference and resolve this issue. I believe that we all, as we stand here, understand that this is just a beginning. And we'd also like, I'd like to, as a member of Home and United Methodist Church and part of LA Voice, we all in faith-based community, we'd like to say, please, we want to see if you can increase it. We know that you've gone to 1.2 or looking at, if you could take at least a 1.5 on this issue. And we look to build permanent and sustainable housing and to address this issue. And I just thank you for your passion and seriousness, and whatever we can do to support you, we're here to support and keep up the good work.
And we, we appreciate that. And trust me, our main goal is to make sure this passes, so we want to try to get the appropriate level so that it passes. 1.2 would get us almost exactly where we want to go. The higher we go, then it gets a little problematic, just so you understand the thoughts behind it. So if I could get Mr. Garza, followed by Ms. Anderson, followed by, is it Nisha Vias? Don, the floor is yours.
Bam! We're here.
Yes, we are.
You did it. You did one thing, and one thing that's very important, you have faith in your city. And when you have faith in us, then we can have faith in you. Your credibility has increased a thousandfold by bringing this to the table. You're asking us if we want to solve our own problem, if we want to solve our problem, and we're gonna be able to do it together. Amazing. I am so proud of you, Jose Weezer, Herb Wesson, Marquis. I love you guys. I love you guys. The issue is, we're getting people vouchers, there's no housing. We need to get this housing done. If there are any providers in this place today, I have a friend, he's got his voucher, and I'm gonna give a shout out to PATH. It was their miracle, under the bridges of downtown, that this person was able to get a voucher and others as well, because they're, they're one of the hardest to reach. If there's any providers here that can help me, we got, we're on a time limit on this voucher, we got a month and, and two weeks, any providers here willing to meet me, talk to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. And before the next speaker, just know that if we are successful this week, then we will begin meeting again, like I said last week, with the media. We will be meeting with the various organizations, we'll be meeting with the chambers. What our goal is, is to try to build an unstoppable coalition of support. So this is just the beginning. We'll be working the entire summer to make sure that we create this positive army that cannot be defeated. Welcome and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Amy Anderson, I'm the Executive Director of PATH Ventures, a developer of permanent supportive housing. I too want to thank you for your leadership in identifying a financial resource for producing more supportive housing, though I'm not gonna blow you a kiss. I am in support generally of the amendments before you in terms of prioritizing supportive housing and raising the bond to 1.2. But you should know that last week, the County of Santa Clara also approved putting a measure on their ballot for $950 million, essentially a billion dollars. But Santa Clara County, as half the population, has a quarter of the homeless population. I don't share that information to criticize, but to give you some context really about how much money is necessary if the intent is to really produce more affordable units and move people off the streets. The definition of supportive housing, very important, may be focused on the status of the individual and not the income.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So please come forward, and I think this is Zandre Johnson, Brooke Lucans or Licans? Yes?
Thank you, Councilmembers. My name is Nisha Vias, I'm a Senior Staff Attorney at Public Counsel. We provide free legal services to low-income persons all over LA County and including LA City. I echo the appreciation of this council's leadership on these issues. I came in, I came to express Public Counsel's support of a bond of 1.5, or speak in favor of preparing and placing a bond measure that would be 1.5 billion, and also, very critically, a minimum of 10,000 public, permanent supportive housing units to be built. I've, I've practiced fair housing and disability rights for most of my career, and I question the reading of the Olmsted decision that would limit the funding of permanent supportive housing units. The Olmsted decision upheld community integration, and permanent supportive housing actually promotes community integration. So I just want to express that, and also thank you again for your leadership on this issue.
Okay. And you guys have to remember too, that we need to pass this in council, and that in life, nobody gets everything exactly the way that it, that, that, that you wanted. We have to come together right now as a community in order to pass this. And I am urging you to, you know, stand with us, recognizing that we're gonna try to do the very best we can to deal with this issue. Yes, identify yourself.
Hi, Alicia Whitsling with the LA Area Chamber of Commerce. Want to thank you guys again for bringing attention to this and bringing it back to Rules Committee for consideration for a larger bond item. We're here to talk in support of the GO bond. We thank you for bringing it to 1.2, but we think it still needs to probably be raised just a bit enough. That still leaves people out of getting permanent supportive housing. We wouldn't meet the goals in the, in the, the strategy that you guys had passed earlier in the year. It's a great plan, I think we're willing to work with you guys when it comes to it being, you know, voting time. But we have the ability to actually make this go far, and where it's at right now still doesn't complete all of it, the, the goal. So urge you to, to consider either lowering the amount that would be included in affordable housing, which, by the way, we're in support of, we're working to try and get more affordable housing out there, but either lower that goal or raise the amount for the bond measure. Thank you.
Okay, so if I can get, is it Ms. Johnson, Ms. Lucans or Licans? Dora, are you still here? Dora Gallo, please come forward. Yes.
My name is Ms. Johnson. And I want to, I want to thank all of you all for the effort that you've made. I'm a part of that permanent supportive housing. I was homeless for over two decades, and because of permanent supportive housing, I am now able to be a productive citizen in the city of Los Angeles as an Angelino. And I think that it's, it needs to be done for everyone at the best of your ability and the best of all the supportive agencies. As I was coming up on this walk, I saw people laying on the grass of City Hall, and I know that they need the opportunity that I have been given too. So thank you very much for your time.
No, thank you so much, and thank you all for coming down. So if I can get the next speaker, and then, let's see, we have Dora, and then I have Alan, I think it's Alan Greenlee, and is it Tom Grody? Yes, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Brooke Licans, and I'm the Chief Development Officer with the Downtown Women's Center. I'd like to thank the committee, Council President Wesson, Councilman Bonham, for your support of this, of this bond, and for the increase from 1.1 to 1.2. We're also here in support of an additional increase to 1.5. We believe that the city's plan calls for 10,000 units of permanent housing, and we believe the increase to 1.5 would help us accomplish the city's plan. We also are in support of the 80% going to extremely low-income housing. We would encourage you to look at a 30%, a 0 to 30% AMI.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next. Hey, welcome, good to see you.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Dora Gallo, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Community of Friends. I am very pleased to join you today in support of all the changes that you're making to the resolution's necessity. I support 80% of the funding being used for permanent supportive housing. I'm glad that there's been two speakers that have clarified the CAO's comment about no prohibition on 100% permanent supportive housing. The Olmsted decision was interpreted incorrectly. I also want to mention that the general obligation bond proceeds can be used for more than just acquisition of land. I'm involved in housing development in other cities, and they have issued GO bonds for housing development, and we've been taking advantage of those proceeds, and it's not just for the land acquisition. We're very excited about today, and the next two days that are coming up before you. We stand ready to join you, to help you create this unstoppable coalition, to make sure that we get the resource that we need to end homelessness once and for all. Thank you.
Don't leave, don't leave, it is a question.
Dora, I have a question, and I'm just selecting you because you've got a great facility under construction in the district, but you've got places all over the county.
My district as well.
You've got places all over the city, which I really appreciate you making a point to integrate people into communities. But when you do a development, how do, how does your organization define permanent supportive housing versus very low or no income? How do you make the decision on who's who and what's what?
Yeah, we were listening to the conversation, and we agree 100% with what Councilman Weezer said. Permanent supportive housing is defined as an apartment building that's not time-limited for people who have a lease, also for people who are homeless and have a diagnosed disability. For many years, permanent supportive housing has been defined as those who are homeless with mental illness, but it has also now increasingly been defined as those who need services in order to stay stable in housing. But the first definition is homelessness, and people who are homeless tend not to have high income. Yes, they may have social security disability, they may have general relief, but beyond that, their income is very limited. So many of us are guided by the principle of 30% of area median income. I understand, and I listened to the conversation about flexibility, and there could be a time when people who are homeless may be making minimum wage, which often in Los Angeles is insufficient to support a standard of life, a quality of life. And so perhaps there are people who are homeless, who may have a disability, who will be under 50% of area in, median income, but they would never be beyond that. We are looking primarily, my colleagues and I really are focusing on 30% of AMI, and that is the definition, as someone said, that is used by many other funders, that we will need to leverage this money to build supportive housing. This bond is insufficient to fund one project. Many of you know supportive housing has many different layers of financing, and if our other regulatory agencies and other funders define it as 30% of AMI, then that's what we would structure our projects to be. But the flexibility is important because, you know, things happen, things change, and, and if we are able to house everyone who's below 30% of area median income, who are homeless and have a disability, and we have extra resources available, we might want to go a little bit higher beyond that.
Okay, so, thank you. Okay, and recognize that Mr. Harris-Dawson had a question for Dora, so if I can get Mr. Greenlee, Grody, and then I think I have a Stephanie Gamer and Eva Williams? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. I want to say five things. First of all, thanks so much, I've been so proud to be a citizen of this community over the last couple of weeks, as I've watched the council and the committee and the staff work really hard to get this right, so thanks so much. My name is Alan Greenlee, I'm the Executive Director of the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing. The second thing I want to say is I want to win. You know, we've been, we've been losing for a long time, I want to make sure we win this. So trust you guys to sort of make the right decision with respect to the polling numbers and the amounts and things like that, but I will say, we want it to be as high as possible.
I get that, but never let your greed exceed your need, we gotta win this. This is a must-win.
I'm totally with you on that, and as a matter of fact, I just want to express my commitment, my organization's commitment, and our coalition's commitment to work with you to make sure that this thing passes.
I'm excited about this coalition that we're building.
It's, it's very, we're very excited too. Just very quickly, what Dora said with respect to permanent supportive housing as the focus, I would just say on the upper end of things, I would recommend that you keep it capped at 60% of area median income, that's a tax credit level, and it works, leverages additional dollars really effectively. And then the last thing I want to say is, I want to make sure that you don't tie yourselves down too strictly with respect to the language in the bond. So make sure that it has accountability and flexibility in it, but let's try to not codify that in the bonds.
I got you. I hear, trust me, I hear you, thank you so very much. Okay, so if I could get, so is this Tom?
Yes.
Then after you, Stephanie, and then Rich Grimes? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, my name's Tom Grody, I live in Skid Row. And first off, I want to echo Don Garza's excitement about the fact that this is happening. But I'd like to try to take these details and specifics and put it in a slightly bigger context by quoting a couple of council members. One is Councilmember Weezer, about a year, more than a year ago, wrote a guest editorial in the Downtown News, and, and you said, "How we deal with homelessness is the measure of our success in the revitalization of downtown." So I think there's a bigger issue here even than what's being talked about right now. And along with that, at the end last year of the Homelessness and Poverty Committee, with a joint meeting with the Health, Mental Health and Education Committee, interviewing or having testimony from five ladies representing five nonprofits that were doing boots-on-the-ground work, Councilmember O'Farrell said, "I now realize we have created a system that sets up people to fail, so I hope this is a major step in literally creating a new system."
Thank you. Okay? Okay, Marie Rumsey, you still here, Marie? Okay, yes, identify yourself. Hey.
Good morning. I'm Stephanie Klaske-Gamer, President and CEO of L.A. Family Housing. As many of you know, L.A. Family Housing is a homeless service provider as well as a real estate developer of supportive housing. In our role as a homeless service provider, we take the lead in SPA 2 of the Coordinated Entry System for homeless and chronically homeless individuals and families. This city has made a robust investment on those systems, on the HFSS and on CES, and what's missing at the end of the system is the permanent supportive housing, is the place for the families who are chronically homeless, who have experienced long-term homelessness, and are of very low income. So I really urge you, as you are rewriting this, to be clear on that definition of permanent supportive housing that you want to support. You all recognize that we need to keep the focus on ending homelessness that happens with the housing we build for the population most in need. So I encourage you, again, as been said, to be consistent with the leverage funds that we all need.
Thank you.
Keep it at 30% AMI.
Thank you. So if I get Ms. Williams, Mr. Rich, Rick, Rich Grimes, Marie Rumsey, and is it Teresa Winkler? Hi.
Hi. I'm Eva Williams. I'm the Director of the Los Angeles Office of the Corporation for Supportive Housing. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'd just like to begin by thanking you for your leadership, and I'd like to also thank my peers in the room. It is due to everyone's leadership that we're even having this conversation today, trying to work out the details of what this should look like. CSH works nationally with communities to help those communities end chronic homelessness, and it has been our experience that communities that have successfully addressed ending homelessness have done so by focusing on building permanent supportive housing at or below the 30% AMI. So we promote that supporting for, supporting the amendments will go a long way toward ending chronic homelessness in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Good morning. Rich Grimes. I'm a member of the Business Leaders Task Force on Homelessness: Hope for Good. I'm also a Chief Operating Officer for Insight Wireless Group, who's designing, building, and operating the L.A. Metro System for cellular wireless communications. I just want to say a couple of points. A lot of things I've said in support of this initiative, but most importantly, I appreciate your leadership, Council President and Councilman Weezer on this. But we have a unique opportunity, and I think that we need, as, as the Home for Good Task Force, we studied this issue for over five years. Don't be short. I understand that there's a need, you know, in any negotiations all too well, as far as compromising and everybody to be able to meet their, their own interests and needs, but we don't want to do it with this. We need to have that 1.1 billion dollars for permanent supportive housing. We don't want to be short on an issue like this.
Thank you.
It's a social justice issue, and it's a dignity issue.
Thank you, thank you. So I don't see Ms. Marie, must have left. Is Ms. Winkler or Walker?
Winkler.
I'm sorry.
Good morning, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you for your attention towards the GO bond. My name is Teresa Winkler, and I am a resident of permanent supportive housing on Skid Row. In the last nine, seven or eight years I have been a resident, and I have suffered from mental illness and drug addiction for almost 25 years. In the last seven or eight years, I have been able to address these issues, and I have been clean and sober for nine years by being, having a key to housing and being able to address my health issues. I'm on a better path, so, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sadio has joined us. I'd like to afford you an opportunity, Mr. Sadio. I am not finished. Do not disrupt. I will run the show. Mr. Sadio, do you want to say something?
I do, but I'm happy to add a few more.
No, no, we're gonna, everybody's gonna speak, but I want to hear from you now.
Where am I? Mr. President, members of the committee, I applaud you for moving this discussion forward. We have really moved this behemoth of a challenge, a social challenge and a problem for us in the right direction. I want to applaud the changes that were added and add that we continue. I think we're headed in the right direction. Of course, we all would love to have three, four, or five billion dollars to address this problem. Of course, we'd like to put a couple billion towards permanent supportive housing. Of course we would, but the question is going from the vision and our values and then moving forward to a strategy and a program, and that's your expertise, Mr. President. I trust you. I've seen you do it on so many occasions over the last 20 years, and that's what confronts us today, is how we go from that vision and those values and come up with a strategic perspective that moves us into a program. And I think that strategic perspective is what I advocated for the other day, that we need to have a rising tide to lift all boats, that we need to find the balance, that there is no value in imposing the 3,000 families who sleep in their cars tonight, the 5,000 other individuals, there's 8,000 people sleeping in their cars tonight. There's no value imposing them against permanent supportive housing. We can do both, and we should do both, and we must do both. There's no value imposing people who sleep in their RVs as we try to figure out this transition. There's no values, you read this morning about the lack of people who have retirements and are going to be leaving the workforce. I was thinking of those two sisters that I spoke about the other day, with retirement, with Social Security, leaving Cleveland for better weather.
Yeah.
Coming out here and on the streets of Woodman off the 134. We should not abandon them as well, and so there is a need to lift all boats, I think, and I believe, and I applaud the increasing it. I will trust you that we will increase it as much as we can, because this isn't just a question of what we should, but it's also a question of what we can. And I will say to you, finally, let me close. This is a great city, and we're going to make it a great city once we make sure that we address the concerns of those of greatest need. But I say to you, not everyone shares our great heart. People are in great concern for their own futures, and then sometimes that doesn't bring out their best angels. And I had many conversations this weekend about this subject matter. We had an early 4th of July celebration, went around and talked to some of our activists, some of our neighborhood council leaders, et cetera. They're not as kind as us, and so in here, this room here, is the room of everybody with the biggest hearts. But out there in the electorate, the Trump populism, right, that we've seen manifested for the last year, less kind, less generous, less taking care of their, being their brother's keeper, their sister's keeper. And so we have to think about that, because it's not a decision that just we are making exclusively. It's a decision that we are making to present to the people of Los Angeles. And in that sense, I have greater confidence in where you tell us where we land in terms of the number, and then that campaign that reaches out and says to them, because they're going to want to know not just about what we do for permanent supportive housing, people at the freeway exits, the people living in their homes, the people in the RVs, and they have a concern when they leave the workforce. They have a concern about their children coming out of high school. Let's not forget the children who come out of foster care within six months are on the streets in Hollywood, right? So I applaud the direction we're headed in. I applaud the leadership of this committee, and I stand available to do all that I can.
I want to thank you for coming down, as I thank Mr. Bonin, and thank you for your kind words, and just assure you that this is serious, and we're going to do everything to make sure that this passes. So if we can move this through council, then I will, we will do everything we have to do to make sure that we are victorious. So if I can get, I think it's last name Co with the United Way, can't quite make out the first name, Jesus Hermosillo, Alicia Witzler, and is that Ruth Schwartz, maybe? Please come forward. Just come on. If I call you, come on. Don't worry about somebody getting in front of you. Chana? Yes, sir.
Good morning. President Wesson, council members, thank you for helping declare the state of emergency, and now we need your help to bring this measure home. I woke up this morning nervous about the things that could go wrong. I am excited about now the things that can go right with this, and I thank you for all of those things. You have the opportunity, as we've worked on ending chronic homelessness for the five years, we've never seen this. You have the opportunity to create a linchpin measure that could truly end this in the city. To do that, you must prioritize homelessness, and that means a few things for us. I think a clear and compelling tie to the 10,000 unit goal in whatever form is important, and to transparently track against that is important. At least 1.1 billion is needed for permanent supportive housing to tie it back to the plan, so we would suggest in your terms to either restrict further the amount, if we want to keep it at the same amount, or have it pull again and add a third option to move forward with council with, and add, and pull that in July and pull two off. So help us secure this council's legacy, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please come forward. Identify yourself, sir.
Good morning. My name is Jesus Hermosillo, and I'm with Unite Here Local 11. I want to thank you for all of your work on this issue. We strongly support making homelessness the focus of this measure and guaranteeing the construction of 10,000 units for homeless folks and dedicating $1.1 billion minimum to this purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next. Hey there.
My name is Chana Grace, and I'm President and CEO of Women Organizing Resources, Knowledge and Services, which is a permanent supportive housing developer and a regular affordable housing developer in the city of Los Angeles. First, thank you for your efforts and your leadership, and I ditto pretty much everything that has been said. Permanent supportive housing needs to be included in the language of the, of the bond. But I would also add that dollars in general oversight be set aside and allocated if H-CID is the one who's going to receive the dollars and has the task of getting that out on the streets, that they be given increased staff, that Building in Safety has increased staff, that the CEO's office, CAO's office has increased staff, in order to make this all flow and we don't run, run into over, roadblocks. Again, folks like Housing Works and L.A. Can, who provide services to the homeless, they need dollars.
Thank you. Please come forward. Identify yourself.
Good morning. Christine from the Building Industry Association. First, I'd like to thank the Homelessness and Poverty Committee, as well as the Rules Committee, for advancing this commitment and for showing all of your leadership on this extremely important issue. I'd also like to thank Councilman Sadio for his continued leadership on providing housing for all. We are very much in support of the GO bond, which will address homelessness and all vulnerable populations and provide this much-needed housing for so many Angelinos, and we want you to know that we would like to work with you in any way possible. Please reach out to us, ask us questions. We are happy to be a resource and provide any assistance possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, next.
Hi, Ruth Schwartz, and thank you all.
Hold on, Ms. Schwartz, hold her time. So again, I'm looking for, is Ms. Witzler, Dave Martin, Beth Mueller, and Ms. Mann? Yes.
Yes, thank you. When we're talking about 30% AMI, I think it's been spoken to, but just to give you a context, 30% AMI for a family of one, single person is $18,250. A person on SSI gets about $12,000 a year, so they're at about 20% AMI. And so, and other people who are homeless and singles get less than that, so 30% is the, the, the high end. A family of three who's at 30% is at $23,450 a month. Under welfare, they get under $9,000 a year. They're, they're, they're extremely, extremely low income with a new term. They're at 15% of AMI. So I just wanted to give that context, that the 30% is, and then 50%.
Thank you.
50% on the high end. Thank you.
Okay, so, next person, please come.
For other houses.
Next, next person, please, no, next person, please come in, identify yourself. Yes, sir.
Yeah, hi, my name is Dave Martin. I'm with the Skid Row Bible Study Downtown, and I would like to see $1.2 billion go to supportive housing. There's a lot of people downtown that could benefit from such housing. Such housing could save a lot of lives. There's people on Skid Row that every day die on Skid Row from either drugs or alcohol. Such housing really could reach out to a lot of these people and, and make a change on Skid Row, and maybe there wouldn't be so much of this death from drugs and alcohol and different things. And so that's why I would like to see 80% go to permanent supportive housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next speaker.
Good morning, and thank you, President and council members. My name is Beth Mueller. I facilitate a Bible study in Skid Row. I've been doing that for five years and been an advocate for seven. The word on the street as we talk about this issue in our Bible study is very, very positive. This is something that people can get their heads and their minds around. We Bible study, and we Bible do. We show up here, and we work out in the streets, and we do what we can to bring salt and light and to put the, in our Christian context, the gospel message to work. And I want to use just an image quickly, an arcade game, you know, the crane game that you put the quarter in, and the crane comes down and picks out some fuzzy minion or some little stuffed animal, right? That's what we're doing here with, with permanent supportive housing. The tines or the fingers on that crane are mental health care, their family reunification, their spiritual care, they're the developers in the room, they're, each one of those fingers is one of these organizations and groups that, that safely get underneath that fuzzy-stuffed animal, that human being, and lift them. If we can put $1.2 billion in the machine, we can pick them all up.
Thank you. Thank you. So, please identify yourself.
Good morning. I'm Zahira Mann with United Way of Greater Los Angeles. I work on our Home for Good Initiative, which was initially launched by United Way in the Chamber and supported by well over 200 partners, and that's an effort to end homelessness. I'm also a proud resident of CD10, and I want to thank you, Council President Wesson, for your leadership.
Thank you.
A critical moment in this work was a strong showing of support and collaboration that happened on the City Hall steps, and that intent to fundamentally shift the way we work on homelessness. So thank you so much to council members Harris Dawson, Weezer, Sadio, Bonin, and others for your leadership on this. Another essential moment will be this vote on the housing bond and parcel tax, because we think it's really critical for that enduring legacy of leadership and action on ending homelessness. In terms of how we do this, we do think that we need to see 10,000 units of permanent supportive housing, 20% of a $1.5 billion measure, that is for affordable housing, 80% for permanent supportive housing, and that 80% being at 0 to 30% AMI.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Latrice Cash, Lisa, is it Payek, Anne Sewell, Jerry Newman, Antonio Ramirez? Yes, ma'am, please come forward and identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Latrice Cash, and, oh, wait. My name is Latrice Cash, and I want to thank you, Mr. Wesson, for what you do. What? Yeah, okay. Thank you. I'm from the L.A. Bible Study in Skid Row, and I'm so grateful for you and your committee and what we're doing for downtown Los Angeles and the natives of California. doing for downtown Los Angeles and the natives of California, right here in Skid Row, and I want to thank you for this, um, my God, for this initiative that's coming up and those 10,000 units. We need them desperately.
Thank you.
God bless you all.
God bless us all. Thank you. Please, hi.
Hello. My name is Lisa Peck. I am a teacher in Koreatown. I'm also a graduate student at Cal State LA, and I'm speaking in support of increasing this bond to $1.5 billion and guaranteeing a minimum of 10,000 units of permanent supportive housing. If anyone here has not been to Skid Row, I encourage you to visit and see the people down there. You will see that affordable housing alone is not enough to address this human rights crisis. It is a human rights crisis when we have people living on the streets, eating out of trash cans. These people include the mentally ill, U.S. veterans, and children. I have seen children as young as five years old down there. I'm sure there are babies, too. These people need services, including drug rehabilitation, job services, mental health care. If they can't afford to treat their mental health issues, they cannot afford to pay for housing, they cannot get jobs, they cannot get jobs. If they can't afford to pay for new clothing, if they can't afford to pay for a haircut, if they can't even brush their teeth. So I support increasing this bond to $1.5 billion and guaranteeing supportive housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann, please come forward, and thank you. Yes.
Good morning, Chairman Wesson, members of the committee. I'm Ann Sewell, Vice President of Housing and Economic Opportunity at the California Community Foundation. And first, I want to thank you for your leadership. Very excited about the bond that we're talking about here today, or the tax. This is an opportunity for us. We, as you know, Councilmember Sadio, Councilmember Harris-Dawson, joined us a month ago when we announced that three local foundations were coming together to put $16 million forward to do early launch of permanent supportive housing, which is already underway. We have our first project, one of Dora's projects, that's making its way through that accelerated pipeline, and we're excited about that. We've also got real interest from other national foundations. We think that'll be a $25 million pool by next month, and that's going to leverage $60 or $70 million with CSH. So this is the kind of opportunity we need to be the takeout money and the supplement to that, and let that pool revolve over and over again. And so I want to echo everything everyone said to support this, and thank you for this.
Thank you for everything, Ann, everything. Thank you. Yes. Yes.
Thank you, President Wesson, Chairman Wesson, and members of the committee. My name is Jerry Newman. I have the honorable position of sitting on the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce's Executive Board, the United Way's Executive Board, in chairing Home for Good and the Business Leaders Task Force on Homelessness. I'm here to ask you to consider increasing your bond to $1.5 billion, or ensuring that at least $1.1 billion go to permanent supportive housing and solving the homelessness crisis. When we sat in front of the Chamber Board, there was only one question asked, and that is, one, are we doing enough, and do we have enough in the bond measure to solve the problem that we started solving seven years ago, which is homelessness? And I'm here to tell you that you have the full faith and support of the Chamber to do what is ever necessary and to put whatever amount is necessary to do that charge. We at the Chamber recognize that we have to solve all home, all housing issues, but we are here today to do both, and we think we can do both by putting in $1.5 billion.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. Yes, Ms. Ramirez?
Thank you. I am homeless by political design and retaliation. What we need is a true leader, and that is Kurt Pringle, the ex-mayor of Anaheim.
Stay on the subject, Ms. Ramirez.
Kurt Pringle, and I am. And what we need is someone who can troubleshoot this crisis of homelessness, and that is Kurt Pringle. Having said that, we, I'm asking the taxpayers to reject the proposed bond of $1.5 billion if it doesn't first and foremost go to house our beloved United States military veterans in 90% of these 10,000 units. Again, and the house, again, then house legal, law-abiding citizens, no nosy, jealous, uncivilized, violent, racist, hate mongering, wetbacks, and chungo Latino gangbangers.
Stay on the subject, Ms. Ramirez.
Pussies and thieves and pigs. Again, there goes the neighborhoods. So again, we are demanding that law, legal, law-abiding citizens be housed, not wetbacks, not gangbangers.
Okay, thank you. Your time's expired. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you. Thank you, and the rest of your "we." So thank you. Thank you very much. And I want to just show, these are general public comment. I think we had a very good conversation today. Let me turn to the clerk and indicate that what I recommend as chair, without objection, that we adopt the recommendations for item one, and we note and file item two. So without objection, that'll be the order. Is there any more business before this body?
No, sir. That clears the desk.
Thank you all so much for coming and staying. This committee is adjourned.